So I guess we're probably at five. Having said that, I am going to call to order the zoning Board of Appeals meeting of Thursday, October 15th. According to my clock here, it's 7:02. First agenda item I need to take care of is reading this statement into the record in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law due to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak, the October 15th 2020 public meeting of the zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view the meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/latecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date. Okay, our first agenda item, fortunately, is at the top. And it is a continued hearing for Markowska at Edge Water Drive. We actually, which will realistically make this meeting a little bit shorter this evening, due to not having everything back, I believe that we're looking for or that they'd like to present, we have received an email earlier today from Maureen Markowska. I'll read it exactly as it came in. Please accept this email as a formal request to continuance of the Markowska petition scheduled for hearing today, October 15th at 7:00 PM. So rather than get into anything other than voting on the continuance, I would ask for a motion to continue to our... Kathy, keep me honest, what date is it in November, our next meeting?
19th.
What was that?
The 19th.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to continue the hearing until, or the petition until the 19th of November if, if the rest of the committee members are so inclined.
So made.
Okay, Chris, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Gary, second in that motion. Do we have any further discussion? No further discussion. All right, we have to do the roll call vote. Let me get my list up here. And we will go right down. Okay, a or nay when I call your name. Gary?
Yay.
I believe Jeff had recused himself from this. So Nora is not available since Amy is on the call. I'm gonna ask you now, Amy, when Nora is not available.
Hey, John, I'm on.
Oh, you are? I'm sorry. I missed you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just had a little bit of...
Not a problem. That works out good. I don't have to ask, I don't have to ask counsel the question. So Nora, a yay or nay?
A.
Chris?
Yes.
And Chris Sheedy? Are you muted?
Sorry, sorry. Yes.
Okay, very good. I vote in favor as well. Motion carried unanimously to continue the hearing until the November meeting. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item. Bear with me, is the Palucci hearing for 39 Cross Street. And let me read into the record. This will be better while we're in person, everyone. I won't have to keep scrolling down for everything, so. Okay, the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law 48 as amendment, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 15th at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Robert Palucci, trustee of 39 Cross Realty Trust, Cross Street Realty Trust, a special permit under 4.1.1 and 7.4.6 is requested to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling on Lot 1, Lot 2, and Lot 3, for a total of three dwellings located in the business zone off Bellway, map 22, block 2, Lot 8, Lot 9. This is provided by the Lakeville bylaws. And the rest of the information has to do with the order suspension by the governor's office. So before I get into reading any additional information, I'm gonna ask whoever is representing this project to please present what they're before us for.
Good evening. Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record.
Hi, Jamie. Go ahead and let us know what you're looking for from us.
All right. Can I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. So in front of you tonight is a special permit request for three individual residential dwellings. This property is mostly zoned business. Approximately this area right here to the north is zoned business. This portion here to the south is zoned residential. The applicant is requesting to be able to construct single-family homes on these three lots. We have gotten through planning board and conservation. And now that we have those approvals, now we're in front of you tonight. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have. But looking at the site, the majority of the abutters, there's a residential house here, here, over here on this property and across the street. While Harding Street, 5 Harding Street, there's a commercial development proposed here. Surrounding these houses with some new houses seems to be a much better fit for the neighborhood. So that's, that's exactly what's proposed here. I'd be happy to answer or try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Let me read into the record some correspondence we have from other boards. Everyone will bear with me for a moment. So we do have a letter from the, excuse me, from the Board of Health dated October 2nd. In regards to this petition, we received a copy of the ZPA petition and associated plans for a residential subdivision off Cross Street, Bellway. The Zenith Consulting Engineering Plan dated August 24th showed three new residential dwellings on-site sewage disposal systems. We feel three is sufficient. We feel there is sufficient land and suitable soils to allow for four new subsurface sewage disposal systems under Title V wastewater manage wastewater design parameters and also have sufficient area for three new proposed wells. There is also a local Board of Health regulation for a slab above high groundwater and all the proposed dwellings meet this criteria. Therefore, based on the information provided to the Board of Health, there's no reason for the Board of Health to recommend denial due to public health issues at this time. If you should have any questions, feel free to contact the office. We also have a letter dated, or memo dated October 9th from the Planning Board at their Thursday, October 8th meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board recommended approval of this petition. This subdivision was previously approved by the Planning Board with the condition that the lots be used to residential use, which is the best interest of the neighborhood. I believe that is what we have. We do have some other correspondence that has been distributed to the board members. Jamie, is Mike on the call or?
Yes, he is.
Mike, rather than me read the letter you wrote, would you, because I don't think I have enough energy to read all the information, would you, would you like to summarize it for us?
Yeah, the thumbnail version is, is what I submitted there is the board, there's certain bylaw requirements for a special permit in the zoning bylaw. As Jamie said, we are seeking a special permit for the use of the property. The property is right now primarily in the business zone. One of the things the board needs to consider is the use noxious, harmful, or hazardous, and is socially, economically desirable and will meet an existing or potential need. And as Jamie said, we believe it is. This is kind of consistent with already in the neighborhood and in this part of the roadway. So we don't think the use is noxious. Again, the other criteria is...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, before, before Mike goes on, the application had an error on it. The application stated that the special permit was being sought under 7.4.6, which it clearly is not. It's being sought under 7.4.1. And that is what Attorney O'Shaughnessy is going through. He's going through the correct section, but the application and the, therefore, because the application had an error, the public, the public notice had an error in it. So I just want to make it clear for the board members that they're looking at section four, section 7.4.1. Section 7.4.6 is research facilities, adult bookstores, and agricultural stands. So this is not any of that.
So let me, let me ask you a question, Amy, if, and Mike, I'll let you pick up again in a second, but does that preclude us from moving forward with, with this? I would assume that we could, I mean, we know what the intent is, obviously, what they're proposing, but so I don't, that doesn't preclude us from doing whatever we decide to do this evening?
You're exactly correct, Mr. Chairman. As long as the, so there's a case, the DuToe case, as long as the intent of what the applicant wanted to do was correct and set forth in the public notice, then the board is welcome to change the relief requested. And so the intent was clear to put single-family houses in an industrial district. It was, it's just one subsection. That's, that's a mistake.
I appreciate you pointing that out. I just want to make sure we do everything correctly.
So you're all set. And then Attorney O'Shaughnessy's letter was clearly addressing the correct sections of the zoning bylaw. So if any board members went by the letter, then they're good.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Amy's, Amy's right. The special permit section 7.4 and 7.4.6 is where they spell out the uses and that's where the single-family detached dwelling is called out. It's being a special permit use. That's all. But, but to circle back to where I was at.
Sorry, I interrupted you. I didn't want you to go too far with that, with them being confused.
No worries. Component is, you know, you have to consider the advantages of the proposed use do not outweigh any detrimental effects, and such detrimental effects on the neighborhood will not be greater than could be expected from the development, which would occur if the special permit were denied. So this is kind of what we, the dance we did with the Planning Board, you know, right now as of right, we could do a commercial development. And when we were before the Planning Board, that was a hot topic of discussion. And if you look at the Planning Board decision, I think that their decision was contingent on this being developed as a, a single-family residential development. So I think we checked the box there. And then the last consideration, the applicant is no reasonable alternative available to accomplish this purpose in a manner more compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood. And again, that kind of, it all ties together. There's residential development here now. We went through the Planning Board process. We believe it's consistent with that particular part of the street. And we would ask the, the board to grant the special permit. That, that is the thumbnail version of my letter. I don't need to waste the board's time. You have my letter. I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
Okay, thank you. I, one quick question, I guess it's probably for Jamie. Access to this is off of Cross Street. Access to the other property, I'm assuming is going to be off of 44, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. At this point, I'm gonna open it up to questions or comments from board members. So anyone who is, actually, well, let me keep in what I started in practice, so, because it's a little difficult to do this via Zoom. So I'm gonna go through the, this, the list here. So again, in no particular order, just the way it's in front of me. Jerry, do you have any questions or comments?
Sorry, no questions for me, Mr. Jerry.
Yeah, no questions. Nora?
No, no questions. I'm good.
And Chris?
Yeah, I have a question for Jamie.
Go ahead.
Jamie, how close is this Bellway? I assume this is a proposed street. How close is this to Harding Street? Right at the mouth?
Um, well, it's got to be, it's several, several hundred feet, maybe even 1,000. I could check on Google Earth if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm looking at Google Earth. I just don't see, I assume it's in a proposed way.
It is a proposed way. That's correct.
Just north of Paradise? Is that my understanding?
It's just north of Paradise. That's correct.
What's the buffer between this Bellway and Harding Street and the proposed commercial property?
Well, the, the, a large amount of the property itself is being put into a conservation restriction. I would say probably somewhere 50 to 60% of the property is being locked up between the Harding Street and the Cross Street portion.
Landscape business?
I'm sorry?
That the old landscape business?
Uh, yes, there was a landscape. And before that, there was, I think it was a fox that they raised, a Ming farm.
Okay. And I'm just concerned about enough buffer if we allow these single-family homes between potential commercial properties in the future. I've had nothing but problems with residents and commercial areas conflicting with noise. So I prefer to see business stay business. We need more business in the town. That's my thought. But if there's enough of a buffer and this is more of a rural neighborhood, I wouldn't have a problem with it. So I'd just like to see a larger map and to show how much buffer and then trees and because of sound and potential future problems. Those are...
If you want to hold on, I can pull one up and, and show you.
Great, thank you. Sorry to be a pain.
No, no, not, not at all. Let me see. All right. If I, I'll share the screen again.
Thank you.
All right. So this is the commercial site out in the front. This is the limits of the property line on, on Fabelway over in here and then down along the side. This dashed line is the actual limit of work, and that is a set in stone limit of work based on dealing with the endangered species program up at Natural Heritage. So what remains beyond this is, is the majority of it is woodland in between. And so there, between this and the houses not being right on the property line, I'm estimating there's a couple of hundred feet of buffer.
Couple hundred feet?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, and then what's proposed to go in this commercial area?
These are proposed contractor bays.
Okay. So only a couple hundred feet buffer between the residence and the, and the proposed commercial properties. So I think that might be a potential future conflict with noise and problems for these, for this neighborhood. So that's my concern. That's, that's, that's where I'm at. And again, I would voice my concern about putting residents in a, in a commercial zone when we need more business in town. So those are my concerns. If anybody else wants to take it from there, please be, feel free. Thank you, Jamie, for bringing that up.
Although our associate members aren't voting on this one, I do want to get in the habit of having them also ask questions or make comments if they'd like. So Chris Sheedy, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a comment. I think Chris Kamichael brought up a very insightful point. People are gonna be spending a lot of money on a new residence. And if noise and contractor bays and industrial use is going on behind them, I think that is a legitimate concern. And my lament about Lakeville for years and years is that we just do not have any business areas to generate tax revenue. So yeah, I think it's a legitimate point of consideration.
If I can point out, the, the flip side for the, the noise is if we put business in these proposed areas, which we, we could do by right, we have more additional existing homes that will have a noise impact to them. I believe several of which are on the, the call. And I believe that they're overall in favor of residents over commercial building, but I can let them speak for that.
Yeah, I'd love to hear that. Yeah. Chris Sheedy, are you good? Do you have any, any additional comments, questions?
Is that, that line you mentioned before, the like, cannot go beyond line?
Yep.
Does that, so, does that preclude you from doing any type of industrial beyond that land?
Well, it's business, not industrial zone land. So...
I'm sorry, business, yeah.
So there'll be no manufacturing or anything like that on site. What happens is that there's gonna be a conservation restriction with property markers put on that line. And it's gonna be, it's gonna actually be monitored on a yearly basis to make sure that no encroachments go beyond that conservation restriction line in perpetuity. So yeah, that, that's, that's a hard line drawn in the sand of where you can't go past and, and cut down trees and do disturbance.
Okay, so am I correct in assuming that if, if you can't do residential in the parcel you're looking to do residential, it becomes basically unusable land?
Oh, no, 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 because that, that line stops on that portion. Right now, these, these lines for the limits of work have been negotiated with Natural Heritage. If we, if we don't do the residential subdivision here, then yeah, we go back to the drawing board with them and create new limits. They're looking to lock up certain percentages of the overall lot. But we, we do have on this cross-street portion, I believe we have over four acres of approved disturbed area that we can work within. So that could be commercial buildings in that area. It's just, I think that the, the existing neighbors, and there are several of them, would prefer residential over commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Chris Campo, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Yeah, to me, it's kind of the same as the rest, kind of the proximity and the noise issues. It almost seems like we're distributing, I guess, those possible risks to new residents versus existing. So I guess I would take that into consideration.
Okay. At this point, I know we have some abutters and other interested parties on. So why don't we, I guess, who, who has something they want to say? And I'll, I'll rely on Lake Camp to let me know who's raising their hand and who's looking to speak. Do we have any comments, questions? Butters in favor or against?
Good evening. This is Dave Morrissey. I'm at 37 Cross Street. How is everybody?
Well, good, Dave. What do you got for us?
Um, a couple things. I just want to fully understand what we're talking about here. So this parcel is now gonna just stay zoned business?
Well, it's, it's, it's currently zoned business. What they're before us is, is to ask if they can have a special permit to allow them to put residential.
So I heard you say that the Board of Health approved this subdivision? Or at least a, a portion of it?
The Board of Health's purview was to make sure that it meets all Board of Health regulations, not necessarily zoning. So it meets all the Board of Health regulations.
So as a member of the Board of Health, did Mr. Palucci exclude himself from any of these votes?
You'd have to check with the Board of Health.
Okay. But he is on the Board of Health, right?
He is on the Board of Health, I believe. Yes, he is on the Board of Health. I mean, I...
That's fine. No, no, that's fine. That's fine.
Sir, if anyone's in here on representing the applicant who wants to reply to whether Mr. Palucci excluded himself.
That's all right. It's rhetorical question.
Well, hang on. You asked the question. Let's get the answer. Was Mr. Palucci involved, Jamie or Mike?
Yeah, I was not present at any meeting. I'm not even sure it was discussed at a meeting. So I am unaware.
So there was, there was no Board of Health meeting you had to attend?
No, usually with, with these, even planning board meetings, they, they, they don't invite you to attend. It's just something that they talk about. If I happen to be on the meeting and I see it further down on the agenda, sometimes I'll stay and, or talk about it. Most of the time, we won't.
Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
So, okay, so that's an unanswered question. Certainly a bit of a conflict in my mind. They have started to do some work over there. You know, we've gone back and forth with this for well over a year now. I don't feel that everybody's been forthcoming with their information. I feel like this whole commercial thing has been kind of dangled over our head. I want to know one way or the other. The work that they've started over there has already caused some issues that I'll deal with with Jamie. But I'm, I'm not gonna offer an opinion either way as to whether I want residential or commercial. You know, I felt one way at one point, but I'm starting to really get a little discomfort about this whole project, quite frankly.
I believe the work Mr. Morrissey's referring to is, there was silt fence, well, what I guess is termed in this case as turtle fencing. Because the site is in endangered species habitat, they had to do turtle sweeps by the 15th of October. And so the, the turtle fencing, which is silt fence, was put up in the, the approved locations. And the biologists went out and did the sweeps. But as far as excavator shovels in the ground or anything, they're, they're not doing that. There's, it was just for the turtle sweeps.
Thank you, Jamie. Does anyone else have any questions? Any other abutters have any comments in favor or against? It doesn't, I mean, I don't think that one went either way. So Mallory?
Hello. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for raising your hand. It makes my job easy.
Um, so I just have a couple, a couple of things is, obviously, I'm just going through this whole process of whether or not, you know, I believe it should be commercial or residential is, is difficult either way, because obviously, in my opinion, I'd rather have nothing back there, obviously, you know. But that's obviously not gonna be the case. Couple of my concerns that I have is, um, coming from Cross Street is where we're gonna have all the traffic. And that's going to affect, obviously, my property, my neighbor's property, et cetera. There was already chainsaws back there cutting down some trees for the turtles, so they could like put up the fencing or whatever. And it was already super loud to begin with. I was parked outside and was like, wow, this is already loud. So I'm not sure how long this project would take. Obviously, having houses, you know, in our backyards is concerning, just, you know, because, you know, we bought the property knowing that, you know, it was, or people knowing that this tree's back there, obviously. If it's commercial, obviously, they have to come from the other side. I don't think they can come from Cross Street. So that would lessen the traffic in the residential area to begin with, because they have to come from, from Harding, I believe. Am I wrong on that? Or if it is...
No, you're wrong.
Jamie, yeah, go ahead, Jamie. Comment on that, please.
Yeah, no, Mallory, you'd be wrong on that. So you could put, in, in a business zone like that, you could have, you could have a number of things. But contractor bays would be, would be cars in and out. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be heavy-duty tractor trailers. So, yeah, I mean, you could have, you could have any type of business, professional office. There's, there's a number of things.
Right. So do we know what's going in the, in the commercials portion of this to begin with? Right, so do we know what's going in the in the commercials portion of this to begin with for this at all, or no, is it still up in the air, he just?
Oh, no, no, it's it's contractor base, uh if I may, yeah, contractor base, so it's. Uh right now, it's uh supposed to be like electricians, plumbers, um it's supposed to be the intended use where they can have an office space. Keep their vehicles, keep their supplies, uh meet up with their employees, go out and do their work during the day, come back and have a physical. Uh spot to have have their equipment and and run their business out of.
And then they'd have to, obviously, they're going to come from Harding to do that.
The the commercial part right now, we have just off of Route forty-four and the residential would be just off across, and remember, it's. It's three houses, there's not going to be a tremendous amount of traffic generated from three houses.
Right, um just one other question is, I remember that in the um past couple of meetings, it was brought up where. If the residential passes, that it has to stay residential, they're not going to be able to do like um. Like an auto body shop out of their 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 place, so they can now do commercial as well, right, it's just going to be strictly um. Residential and obviously like, you know, a home thing, obviously, like anyone else can do.
Yeah, so the what the planning board, and now the zoning board can put any type of limitations that they want on a special permit, as long as. Our council agrees that it's a legal um condition, but the planning board. Reference the fact that their approval of the subdivision roadway is only for. Things that are allowed in a residential use subdivision, so at home businesses. If it's allowed in a residential district, then they're okay with it, it's fine, if if we're. Going back to the commercial aspect, they would have us change the roadway, we would, it would be a bigger road. Um heavier duty road built for more traffic. Um is what I think that they're looking for, they're not looking for the smaller twenty foot waved road if it was going to be commercial. So that was their main concern is they didn't want us to get this far, have an approval, get denied at zoning board. And then put businesses on this right of way, we would have to go back, change the roadway layout to a commercial sized roadway. Um to then develop it commercially.
Right. Um I guess, and then one of my last point is, obviously, once. Trees are knocked down, houses are built, the commercial aspect of it that's going up. A couple hundred feet isn't isn't a very lot of uh not a lot of leeway, obviously, for noise travel. Um and I think you guys did put maybe barriers or something in place um to to stop that, is that correct?
Yeah, we did, I believe, I believe it was at your request, we we um. We gave a uh a buffer along the back property lines, which is uh going to be vegetated. And on the back of Mr. Morrissey's property line, they're going to be constructing a fence.
Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Uh Jamie, could you confirm that um, you know, one of the the questions Mallory brought up had to be with, you know, traffic coming in um to the commercial? There is absolutely no connection between the proposed three um. House lot subdivision in in the commercial, I know you have that, no, no, but there's no way for them to cut through or anything, so there's good, there there should be no commercial traffic in that.
No, and 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 that's the nice part about this is, we're actually putting the only connecting area into a conservation restriction, so they can't, they couldn't even construct one. Uh in the future, if everything goes the way that is planned.
And Amy, I'm going to ask you just to confirm, I think I know this, but um we if we were to issue a special permit, we could um restrict it to uh. Make sure that the uses, um even though the underlying zoning is business are only for residential. Yeah, you know, at home businesses or whatnot, correct?
Yes, because that that's what's requested, um and the planning board also did um limit it to just residential for those three.
Right, so we could mirror their their verbiage, okay, thank you. Uh who else do we have for butters that have questions or concerns? I don't think I see, Lake Kim, does anyone have a hand up or? Anybody on Facebook looking to talk or have a question?
No hands and no one on Facebook.
Okay, um. Chris Carmichael, I'm gonna, you you've brought up the the concern about the um. Residential and and the business zoned and and Chris Sheedy is as far as the proximity, um. Any of the responses or um the the limited amount of questions from the residents, have they? Do you have any any particular issues you'd like to ask any of the butters that that maybe they could directly answer?
Well, I I think some more has come to light, um because there's only going to be a couple hundred feet of buffer in between the residential and the commercial. Uh or the proposed residential in the commercial zone. Um I have a problem with that, because I I have sound problems all the time between commercial and residential. Properties with more than a thousand feet of buffer, so I see this as a potential conflict. Uh and again, I favor commercial in the commercial zone and residence in the residence zone, so that's that's my point.
Any other comments from anyone else on the board? Okay, well, um I guess what we have before us here basically is uh obviously, we know what the zoning is, we know the petitioner is looking to have us uh. Allow through special permit to put residential there, um. I will have to say, I I I would be. I would be more concerned about doing this if we had a a lot of butters who were opposed to it, but um I mean, I I know the area. I'm I'm assuming most of the board members do know the area, um and and as much as I completely understand where Chris Carmichael is coming from, that potentially, there could be the. The issue there, um but this is in existing houses that are there at this point, and we're doing it kind of after the fact, which is, which I believe is a is a is a pretty strong argument. Change zoning after somebody's moved in. Um I'm just not so sure the neighbors, um again, and and maybe I'm making an assumption, I'm just not so sure the neighbors are are. They're probably opposed to having anything built behind them, which I would be too, but um. I'm not so sure they'd want a warehouse going behind them if uh if a subdivision didn't, you know, three house subdivision didn't go behind them, um. And it sounds like, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, I I did see one of the planning board meetings, I didn't see them all, but. Have have any of the questions or most of the questions and concerns from the neighbors? Been resolved at this point, as far as, you know, you had mentioned, or Mallory had brought up, as far as putting some buffers there and fences and whatever the case may have been, are there any outstanding issues that the neighbors are? Still have at this point?
Um. You you know, I I'm I'm not aware of any um. Any outstanding issues, I think at the planning board meetings, uh we had several, and I think we addressed the majority of them. Um I've met Mallory out on site and walked uh walked our property with her, um I spoke with Mr. Morrissey uh several times, um. And I I I agree, I'm not sure that they love the idea of it being developed back here, but. Um but I I do believe that the residential use is going to be a lesser impact on them than a commercial use.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion, and let's keep in mind, and and Amy, make sure we do this the right way, if we if we if someone does decide to make a motion to grant the special permit. Uh I want to make sure we we revise however the apple, the petitioner put the application in to make sure it's correct.
Make a motion, we uh grant the petition, allow residential in the business.
Any restrictions or restriction possibly mirroring?
I think we should mirror the planning board decision.
Amy, does he need to do anything in 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 addition to to reference the error in the the clerical error, so to speak, in the um application?
No, no, um I just wanted to point out the difference between Attorney O'Shaughnessy's. Letter and his explanation of the special permit and the application, so.
That's why I just.
We went through this at our last at our training, and I said you have to look at the exact section, and you're not looking at that section, you're looking at other, but um. I think that um I would suggest that the motion um restrict. The um special permit to residential uses only.
I think.
Rather than rather than mirroring the planning board, the planning board issued a subdivision. Approval, which is not a special permit, um so there's a lot of other things in this in the. In the subdivision approval that we don't want to mirror, because it's just not in our jurisdiction. Um so I guess I would have it, I would say that the special permit is limited to three residential dwellings, and. Then if so, if if something else wants to happen in the future, they'd have to come back and they would have to. Be able to have another use with a residential dwelling, which is. Pretty much, you know, just accessory uses such as a garage or something, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um would that also include um allowed uses in the residential, like an in an in-home business?
That's what I'm saying, so it has to, whatever has to, whatever would happen in the future has to be related, has to be allowed with a residential dwelling, so.
Just wanted to make.
But I, you know, that's a. That's a good question, I I think there there's an argument to be made that they might need a special permit for that also, but. At this point, what we're doing is not limiting that, we're just saying the special permit is only for three residential dwellings.
Amy, part of this, I'm sorry, may may I ask a question, John?
No, hang on, I I want to get the the, I just want to clarify, Jeff, are you good with that explanation?
I'm good with that, amend the motion to include that.
Okay, let me hang on one second, Chris, I'll come back to you, do we have a second to Jeff's motion?
This is Nora, I'll second it.
Sorry, Nora.
Uh Nora, I'll give it to you. Jerry will get the next one, all right, so we have a first, uh we have a motion on the floor, seconded by Nora, um now discussion, Chris, you had a question, I believe, for clarification, maybe?
Um I just have uh additional comment for Amy, Amy, can we request additional screening or landscaping on this residential side, I know we usually do it just for commercial. But I think it would be important to add that um to this as well, uh for future some various.
If you think that the um if you think that additional screening and landscaping would um make this use not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Then I think that's definitely something that would fall into a special permit condition.
Okay, then I I would add, I would like to add some some type of landscaping or screening buffer in between those, um.
All right, hang on a second, Dick, um all right, so Jeff has a motion, we have a second, and rather than 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 adjust it at this point, Jamie. I know you touched on a little bit based on Mallory's question, but it sounds like they already have. They have something in place as far as uh, you know, some 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 barriers, could you explain a little more detail what it is that that may suffice for us, or if we need to adjust it, we can?
They do, so right now, behind Mallory's house, um. The the land is cleared into into um the applicant's site, and so. The applicant uh agreed to reestablish uh. Trees in in a uh buffer zone and also keep a buffer zone that's on the. Our recorded plan in which uh Attorney O'Shaughnessy has uh provided uh sample deed to the planning board during the approval. And then where we couldn't um provide the vegetated buffer, we provided fence. So that entire back property line either has a vegetated buffer or a fence buffer between the existing residential houses and us. That was a concern of the planning board that we did address.
Okay, so Mallory, you want to just confirm this to me, since he referenced you, it sounds like there was property, it's it's actually, you're probably going to have. Although you'll have something behind you now, you're you're going to have even a little bit more of a of a buffer in the sense that it sounds like it was clear cut before behind you, it was wide open, now they're going to put some trees there.
Yeah, so my property line um ends and the other one does begin, it's it is cleared out, um. You know, to cut the grass and stuff, and um and one of the other previous meetings, he they did agree to add trees across my property line, so that way, obviously. I didn't have to like, you know, sound barrier, but also, I think, just to have some. You know, kind of separate me from the other house, so that we're not like staring at each other and like our windows and stuff. Um so they did, they did agree for that, I obviously, I don't know what was established in the plans, um but I talked to Jamie and he said they were willing to do that.
Okay, well, I'm I'm confident that if Jamie said they were willing to do that, that that will happen, so.
Yeah, and that's part of the definitive record, that absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, does that satisfy you?
Well, yeah, I think screening should be part of it, um and and I understand they put some in there, um but I think it should be maintained. Uh I think the word maintained and uh established and maintain should be part of that as well, if it's not already in there.
Jamie, Mike, you guys good with that?
Uh yeah, that that's part of our uh. Our Homestead uh Homeowners Association documents anyways, um that we're going to maintain that buffer, except that if a tree is falling down, it's going to cause. Harm to people or property, that that's our only ability to go in and and uh remove that particular tree, and then it would have to be replaced.
Okay. So I think we're good, I don't think we need to revise it, it sounds like everything has already been, has been put into place, um. If anyone has any other comments or questions or disagrees, if not, I'll call the vote. Okay, well, second half is my computer went to sleep on me, all right, here we go. We have no further discussion, roll call, vote, if you're in favor, yay, if you're against, nay. Jerry?
Yay.
Jeff?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
No.
And I will vote in favor. Four to five, uh four in favor, one um no, motion carries. And Kathy gonna do her thing. You're mute, Kathy. There you go, I got you.
Okay. Uh fourteen days to do the paperwork, um it's mailed out, after twenty days, you can have the town clerk sign it, if there are no appeals. I think they know, then you need to record it with the registry of deeds and submit the receipt to the building department.
I'm pretty. Pretty sure you're right, I'm sure these guys know it, but just be safe, right? All right, thank you, guys.
Appreciate your time, have a good night.
You too. All right, our next agenda item, or I guess our final agenda item. Is Old Field Estates, and. Uh where is the letter? Okay. Jamie, are you representing or who's representing, oh, oh, Mike, you're representing Old Field Estates as well, is that correct?
Yes, John, yep.
Okay, um. All right, so we're looking for requests to change for comprehensive permit uh for this project, so um. I'm going to have you tell us what you're uh what you're looking for.
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman, um uh I know we have a new board here, um this past June, uh comprehensive permit was issued for. Sixteen uh three bedroom units um in eight duplex style buildings um on um old uh Rhode Island Road. Um the project is known as Old Field Estates, um in the decision, there was a condition that units one, five, seven. And ten were the affordable units, um we're we're asking the board tonight to uh allow us to. Make a slight change to the permit, um and to change, instead of uh unit seven. Being an affordable unit, we want to change it to unit fourteen, um this, in my opinion, this would fall under a minor modification. Um today's day twenty, the board can vote tonight, and you can say it's a substantial change. Or an insubstantial change, if it's deemed substantial, we have to have a hearing and we go through that whole process again. Um if if you look at the regulations, uh I'm not quite sure this fits into the substantial category. But um there is no difference in the size of the units, the units are the same, uh the locations changed a bit, um we did that to spread it out. Um Mass Housing was a subsidizing in agency, uh we ran it by them, they were okay with it. Um so uh the the biggest difference is uh unit fourteen, which we're seeking to have as an affordable now, has a walkout basement. And unit seven does not. And that's that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, yeah, we do have correspondence from Mass Housing saying they did not see an issue with it, um. I'm wondering if, just for the record, um. Jamie, you still on the call?
No, I think he's gone.
He's gone, okay, well, I was going to have um. Somebody pull up, I know, I know you have the, everyone should be, uh everyone has it in their packet, the layout, um.
Yes.
Which shows basically um. What units are are being moved moved where, um and uh it it really just, it seems like you. What units are, are being moved, moved where, um, and, uh, it, it really just, it seems like you guys are just. Shuffling things around a little. You're, you're, you're not creating anything, anything different than, than was there. You're just moving. Like I said, shuffling them around. So, um. I'll, uh, ask, I'll ask the other board members if they have any comments or questions, uh, before we decide whether it's substantial or not. Jerry?
I have no questions, Chairman.
Jeff?
No questions. It, uh, happens all the time.
Nora?
No questions.
Chris Carmichael?
What's the order of construction? Is seven going to be built first and 14 last or, um?
Uh, uh, I'm not, I'm not sure what the sequence is, but one out of every four units will be an affordable unit.
Okay. We saw a problem come back where, uh, uh, several phase condominium project. Wanted a phase out and then put it, um, the affordables off till later. I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen here. That's my concern.
Yes.
Uh, I'm going to go to my associate members, um, and ask, uh. Chris Sheedy, do you have any questions?
Comments?
No, no questions.
Chris Campo?
Hey, what is the primary driver for the switch?
Uh, I didn't hear the question.
What, what, why, why the switch? Which, that, which the driving force behind it?
Uh, it, it, it's just, it was kind of congested over there. Um, we, you, you said we have unit 10. Uh, you don't, if, if you don't have the plan on, on, in front of you. Uh, unit 10, uh, and unit nine were a building that was adjacent to unit eight and seven. Um, we just felt it was better just to spread out the affordables a bit more. So it's, it was more spread out than it currently was approved. That's all.
Hey, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Amy.
If I, if I may, so. I just wanted to point out that unit 14. Unit 14 is now, right? That's one of the ones that's right along Rhode Island Road, correct? So you're taking a unit off of the sub, off of the cul-de-sac and putting it on a main road.
Yeah, that, that, that's right. Um, and, and, and again, we thought, um, to, to offset that location. Um, the, the fact that it would be a walkout basement where it could, that, that the basement could be, I don't know, developed for whatever, a family room or whatever. That was kind of a, a consideration. It would, it would offset moving that closer to the street.
But, but prior to this change. From unit, from unit 11 to unit 16, none of those were affordable? So the whole, that whole side of the, of the. That whole side of the, of the project was not, there was not one affordable?
No, you, unit 10 isn't affordable.
But unit 10 is at the top of the cul-de-sac.
Right, right.
So I guess I'm looking at the plan. I know you can't see it. I'm looking at, I'm reading Oldfield Way horizontal and I'm reading Rhode Island Road vertical. And so it seems to me that the, the top of the project, there was never any affordables. I'm, I'm just, I'm. I, I came into this at the end in June. I don't, I don't recall.
Right. Um, well, you, unit one, uh, wasn't affordable. That, that is, uh, also on, uh, Rhode Island Road.
Right, but that's below Oldfield Way.
Right. So, so on that side of the road, unit 14 would be the only affordable. Then we'd go down to the cul-de-sac to the, uh, to the right, unit 10. Um, and then below Oldfield Way, we have unit five. And then. As you head towards Rhode Island Road, again, unit one's an affordable.
So essentially. By moving this unit to unit, by moving the affordable to unit 14. You are, you're distributing the, the affordables even more because you're putting an affordable finally on that side of the road.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, right. Yep.
But the, the other thing is that you now have two affordables on Rhode Island. Road. You have one and 14.
That's right. I mean, we could, we, I, I suppose we could always. If, if that's a concern, we could always flip unit one and unit two. I mean, I wouldn't, I don't see, I mean, I'd have to, I think Paul's on the line, but, um, I, I don't. I wouldn't see any issue doing that to offset that if the concern is having two affordables right on Rhode Island Road.
Um.
Well.
I mean, that's up to you guys. That's it.
Yeah, Amy is pointing out, pointing out what, what she's saying. So, um. Yeah, I'm, uh. I'm impartial, um, but, uh, I don't know. I, if my fellow board members feel that, that it's substantial. Um, I mean, yes, the, the side of the house is on Rhode Island Road. It looks like the, the driveways are on Oldfield Way though, correct?
That's right. Mm-hmm.
What do the board members think? Anybody have a question or concern about that or?
Yeah, I think.
Hang on.
One and two.
Affordable. Say, hang on, Chris, say that again.
I think Amy's correct. Um, I think you should flip unit one and two for the affordables.
Nora, you had a comment?
I was just going to say the same, same thing. I'd rather see one and two, uh, flipped.
Mike, did you say Paul was on the line? I, I know you don't want to.
No, he's, he's, he's here at someplace.
Yes, I am.
Paul, would you be okay with flipping one and two?
I would like to point out that there, there are four units on. Rhode Island Road and two of them do face Rhode Island Road. 14. And lot one. Are on the subdivision road. Like to make that clear, please.
It's a valid point. Well, our, our decision tonight is whether it's substantial or not. If we consider, if we deem it substantial, then we have to. Spend some more time on it. Um. Doesn't mean anything's going to change anyway. Um. So I guess, uh. Maybe to Nora and Chris, I don't know how. Strongly you. You feel about that. Amy, is this a super majority vote or a simple majority?
It's a majority vote.
So three out of five, not four out of five, correct?
Correct.
Nora and Chris, are you guys that? Concerned or?
Well, could they make unit 13 be affordable? Instead of 14, instead of flipping one and two? It's an option.
I'm not open to that.
Hey, John. John, it's Nora.
Yes, yes, Nora.
As I read the requirements as to whether to stay substantial or not, I don't, whether we flip or don't flip. I don't view it as a substantial, uh, change that we would have to, uh, move it into more hearings.
Okay. And, and I think, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's why they, they, they define it as, as substantial, uh. Because of it's, it's, it's. It's not anything that grave. They, you know, based on the way 40B works, they, they want to move these along. Is that inaccurate? Picture? I mean, that's, that's part of the reason why it's three out of five as opposed to four out of five on these projects, correct?
Right. They also, the regulations also, um. They have some, um, some kind of, um, examples of substantial and insubstantial, although. It's, it's at the end of the regulations where it's when HAC has to make this, this decision, but. Um, and, and this doesn't seem, this does not seem to be a substantial modification. Um, I, I only pointed that out because I'm curious if, if mass housing noticed the same thing. So when you're driving into the. Um, when you're driving into Oldfield Way, you now, the first two are, are the affordable units. Usually they like to see them. Spread out. Um, so that's, that's why I was pointing that out, but, um. Things that are substantial are, um, an increase in 10% or more bedrooms, um, or decrease in, um, units. The, this just doesn't seem to fall into anything that's substantial, in my opinion, under, under the regulations, under the 40B regulations.
And, and I just note, Mr. Chairman, that, um, Mass Housing, the re-mail says, uh. No worries on our end. All the units are still distributed throughout the development. So that's good. So.
So I was just wondering if they, did they see the plan is what I was wondering, or did they just, was it just, we're switching, you know, 14 and 10? I just didn't know. It doesn't seem like, I read their email. It doesn't acknowledge that they looked at the plan.
Yeah, I, I, I believe I provided them the plan, Amy. Um, they get a second cut at it anyways because we're in the final approval process. So if, if they really have an objection, they still have a second cut at it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm looking at the same thing. I mean, we all have it in our packet, um, the, the letter from, uh, Michael Busby from Mass Housing. So. Um, I'm, I'm inclined to, as Nora pointed out, I, it, it is a change. Maybe the, it's, it's not perfect, but it's, I, I still don't think it's. It's, it's substantial that, um. That we need to hold more hearings on it. So. Any other questions or comments? Are there any butters or anyone else, um, who? Wants to comment before I call a vote? Lake, can we get anybody on, uh, Facebook looking to chime in?
We got a message in the chat from, uh, Sharon Dennis saying, uh, quote, why does it matter where the affordables go?
Mm-hmm.
Well, they need to be distributed evenly.
So the regulations.
I'm oversimplifying it, Amy, but they.
No, you're right. No, that, that's exactly what I, what it is. The, the regulations require that they be distributed.
Yeah, they don't want four affordable units all next to each other because that kind of creates its own community within a community. So. They don't want anyone to know you're in an affordable. They want. Everyone to look the same. All right. If we have no other comments, um. I guess I will ask for a motion to consider the. Non-substantial, if anyone is inclined to do so.
Make the motion.
Okay. Jeff has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Jerry's seconded the motion. Any further discussion? This is to vote on whether the change is substantial or insubstantial and we're voting at this point, the motion is that it is not substantial. So. Roll call, vote. Jerry?
Yay.
Jeff?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael? You're muted, but I'm thinking you said yay. And in favor as well. So it's unanimous. Change is insubstantial. So you, you can continue on, Mr. Turner.
Um, I just. I'd like to point out if you're standing on Route 79, looking down Oldfield Way. As of right now, all the affordable units are to the right side of the road. One.
Okay, who's, who's speaking?
I'm sorry.
Oh, Paul, go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't realize who was speaking. All right. Go ahead, Paul.
I'll start over. Sorry. If you're standing on Route 79, looking down Oldfield Way, all the affordable units are to the right. One, five, seven, and 10. So as the development moved on, we noticed it was congested up in the right-hand corner. And I thought that route, that unit 14 would serve better. To get some affordable units on that side. I have 16 and 15 that face Rhode Island Road at Market Ray. 14 is right next to them, but their driveway would be on Oldfield Way.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, all members, new and old. Uh, have a good night.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, well, good news is I think the meeting is ending earlier than we had all expected this evening. That doesn't mean that may be this case in November. So. Um. We do have some minutes to approve from the May 7th meeting, which I believe everyone should have been emailed and received. Um. Uh, May 7th and, and September 17th from, um, from Kathy. So. Uh, Amy, I have a question, or I guess I have a, a follow-up question. Have we figured out what to do with minutes? Prior to?
Yes. Um, minutes are, it's a ministerial vote. And so, um, you are essentially. Um, if the, I would, I would prefer, if this is not set in stone, but I would prefer if a person that was at the meeting made the motion. Um, again, preferable if a, if a person at the meeting made a sec, you know, seconded the motion. Um, the rest of it is just confirming that the minutes, um. You know, according to the people that were there are accurate.
Okay. So let's do this in reverse order then. Um. Our September 17th. Meeting. Um, which I believe is the meeting we. We continued everything from. So. I think other than. Chris Campo, who was not sworn in at that point, everyone on the board now, um, participated in that. So I will entertain a motion to. September 17th. Minutes.
Those minutes aren't available.
They aren't.
They are not. I. I think I, I think it was the August ones that were ready and when I was doing the agenda. I wasn't thinking and I put the next month, but those aren't available.
Well, here's what we're going to do. We're going to move agenda right to number four to next meeting when we get everything squared away. Now that we know how. The minutes, so I can make sure. I'm not even honestly sure whether I was at the May 7th meeting or not. I, I, I'm, I. I'll admit I may have missed a meeting here or there in the past year. So. Any other old business to come before the committee? Any new business to come before the committee? Or the board, I keep calling this a committee. Uh, okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Chris made a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Jeff seconds it. Roll call, vote. Okay. Yay or nay? Jerry?
Yay.
Jeff?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris?
Yay.
And I'm in favor as well. Meeting is adjourned at 8:07 PM. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you in November.